Good evening and welcome. As you can see by that sign, we believe that democracy is not a spectator sport. That's why we need you here. We need you voting. We need you working for candidates. And we need you interested in the system and in the political system. The League of Women Voters never supports a candidate nor opposes a candidate. For 99 years, we've had this tradition, and we're not going to break it now. I am Dotte Hayes, and I am co-president of the League of Women Voters, and I'm happy to welcome you here. If you would like to join the League, we have the treasurer of our League over here in the pink hat. We'll be glad to take your money for a membership. The League is open to men and women 16 years and over, and we just had a national convention in May, and we passed a law lowering the age to 16. It was at 18. So, welcome again, and we are going to take the county commissioners first. And we are going to do the county commissioners who are running for District 1 and District 5 together. Those four people are going to come up together. Will you please come up here? And then, we will read the statements from District 3 and have the two candidates for District 2 together. Candidates, I'm going to let you introduce yourself, and we're going to start on this side and move over. Will you please announce which district you are running in and which party you are representing as you introduce yourself and give your opening statements? And the opening statements are...how long timers?
Ninety seconds.
Nine?
Ninety.
Ninety seconds. And these are your timers right here, and they will tell you when your time is up. Jeffrey, we're going to start with you.
Hello. My name is Jeff Kowalski. I'm running as a Democrat for County Commissioner, District Number 1. I was born and raised in District Number 1, not far from my current home. I attended K through 12 and two years of college in Alpena before moving to East Lansing to complete a Bachelor of Science in Forestry. I worked eight years in the forestry industry in Oregon before moving back home to attend the Concrete Technology Program at ACC. Since I moved home, I became heavily involved in the community and ran for this very office six years ago. Since then, I have held this office and have become a business owner. My goal then was to be a fiscally responsible commissioner and to look for ways to cut the budget without sacrificing essential jobs and services. Nearly six years later, I do believe that I have played a large role in accomplishing just that. During my three terms as Commissioner, we as commissioners have kept expenditures low while still providing essential services. We have looked for ways to be foresighted and not pass off costs to future generations. I have spent the last four years as a member of the Finance Committee where I have spent countless hours researching and making decisions about how our county dollars have been spent. I enjoy serving the people of Alpena County and thank the League of Women Voters for inviting me to attend tonight's forum. I thank all those people from District Number 1 who vote for me on Election Day. Thank you.
Bradley?
Hi. I'm Bradley McRoberts. I'm Republican for District 1 Commissioner. I'm kind of a newbie at that, at this, first time running for a public office. I've lived in Alpena in District 1. I grew up there on Bedford Street. Graduated from Alpena High School, graduated from Alpena Community College, went on to Grand Valley State University and got my Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice. I was hired by the Sheriff's Department in Alpena in 1976 as a deputy. I worked many jobs there, and in 1992, I was promoted to Undersheriff, and that was a real ride, and that's what made me determined that I wanted to get out of police work. I was tired of administration. So, in 2000, I took a lateral for the County of Alpena and became the first IT Director that Alpena County had. It was a real learning experience, but we had nothing, and so, it was mine to build up or to fail. We did a great job, and I'm very happy with the staff I had. I also worked for Alpena Township for 25 years as a firefighter, and I was adjunct faculty for Alpena Community College. I taught correction classes and computer classes. Currently, I'm the Treasurer of Alpena Free Methodist Church, and I volunteer at the St. Berber Soup Kitchen. I appreciate your support on Election Day for Commissioner, District 1. Thank you.
Brenda?
My name is Brenda Fornier.
Brenda, will you put that microphone in front of you, please? And then, put your mouth right up next to it. Keep it closer, closer. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Fornier. I'm running for County Commissioner, District 5, and I am a Republican. I'd like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters for this forum and for those of you who have taken your time out of your evening to come and learn about those who are running as county commissioners. I am a candidate for District 5, County Commissioner, District 5. My husband, the 37 years, and I have lived in Alpena. That's where we worked, raised our family, and retired. I have three grown children, six grandchildren, one great-grandchild, which has given me some great perspective into the needs and concerns of the different generations who call Alpena home. Those of us who are a little older care about, amongst other things, our health services. Those my children's age are concerned about jobs. The group that my grandchildren fall into are education and recreation. And of course, I think of the environment and the sort of area it will leave future generations, like my great-grandchild. You know, I have to admit, I'm not a very slick talker. I might not have all the answers for every question you ask tonight, but I can tell you, I'm a hard worker, I'm devoted to the community, and what I say, I will do. I am, I'm running because I believe I have something to offer. I've served on numerous boards. Over the years, I've served as trustee, and I have to stop.
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mary Hess, and I am currently the Alpena County Commissioner for District 5. I am a Democrat. My family purchased the property I live on in the 1940s. I have been coming up here all of my life. My grandfather died here, my parents retired here, and my father died here. My husband and I retired here, and we intend to die here, hopefully of old age. After a few years of retirement, I decided that I still had something to offer and that I wanted to spend my time giving back to the community that has meant so much to me for so long. In 2014, I ran against my opponent's husband, Gerald Fornier, for District 5 Commissioner, and I won. This year, 2016, his wife is running against me. Sometimes, I feel like I'm on the TV game show in The Feud. Both my husband and I are retired attorneys and still licensed to practice law. I have been putting my training and experience to work for you for the last two years, and I'd like to continue to do so if you agree on November 8. If you'd like to know more about me, I've put some political cards with my website address on them on the table provided here by the League. Thank you.
Thank you all. And the first question is going to go to Bradley. Will you begin this first question? And then, you all need to answer the same question, and they have how much time?
Ninety seconds.
Ninety seconds. The first question is, "Do you believe Alpena County Jail needs to be replaced? Why or why not? If so, what should be done to accomplish this?"
Well, let me see. I spent 23 years there. The following 15 years, I spent fixing their computers. Yes. The Alpena County Jail was really outdated when I started in 1976. It's in bad shape. The roof's leaking, it's sinking. We've done all kinds of...we've done a lot of repairs, additions. It's a lawsuit waiting to happen, but quite honestly, it's a nightmare. You can't update anything. The walls are two-foot thick, reinforced concrete. Believe me, I've tried to run wires there for computers. And that is one of my thoughts, because I think it's...now's a good time. Now that the county doesn't have any bonds for the hospital, we really need to get serious about the county jail, because, number one, I believe the hospital wants that property; but number two, it's built on a swamp, and it's slowly sinking in there. Roof leaks all the time. It's a nightmare. Absolutely, 100 percent, yes, we need to work on a new jail. Funding, we'd have to look at funding. There used to be grants available for jails and institutions like that, but I'd have to look for that, and we'd have to get involved that way.
Brenda?
I agree. We do need a new jail.
Brenda, would you put the microphone? She has to borrow a microphone.
I agree. We do need a new jail. How are we going to pay for it? That's a good question. When they gave away our Alpena General Hospital, they said to us, "We won't have no bonds. You're going to be saving money on your taxes." So, now, I'm here with a new jail. They're talking about bonds. So, I don't see where we're going to save any money on our taxes if we go that route. I don't know which route to take. We could go for grants if there's any available, maybe put a millage. I don't know. Where's the jail going to go? You have to buy property, you have to build the building. It's going to cost a lot of money. They did put a board together, and I hear they're looking into a few things, so...but I do agree, yes, we do need a jail. Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you. Yes, I agree, we do need a new jail, and I am on that committee. But before that committee was even established by Sheriff Habermell, I became involved because Sheriff Kalaschowski contacted me and contacted as many people as he could to start a grassroots level project, or grassroots level that could put recognition to this. I agree much with what Bradley said. There were a number, three to four meetings before the formal committee was established by Sheriff Habermell. Our current jail was built in 1956 with one update in the 80s. Overall, condition is poor. As a county, we have to, at its own cost and expense, have a suitable and sufficient jail and keep it in good repair, and ours is not. I think it was Bradley that said, "It's a lawsuit waiting to happen." And I think I toured that jail two times. I strongly support Sheriff Kalaschowski with that project, and I know it's a project that he not only would like to see really started, but hopefully completed while he is still sheriff. I urge you to check out WBKB and Insights that aired on September 11, 2016, and also on my website. I'm about out of time, but there are going to be financial issues, but the one thing we're going to really need is strong public support. Thank you.
Jeffrey?
Thank you. I do agree with the other candidates. We do, in fact, need a new jail for the very reasons that my opponent really brought up. And that's one thing that he did have a lot of experience with in his time as IT Director is the fact that we have such a difficulty in running any kind of cameras through there, security measures are not where they really should be for that reason, or it's constantly a hurdle to try to keep those security measures in place. I do agree completely that we do need a new jail. How we pay for it is another thing, and like Mary Hess had mentioned, there is a committee looking into that right now. Whether we were going to look into that through bond measure, as my opponent mentioned, the hospital bond is not there anymore, or it's set to be de fees. Whether we'd be looking at doing that through a millage, it's just not quite clear to the commissioners yet how we'd pay for that. There is a possibility, if you look at it, and the committee be looking at that, is whether you might have a development firm, maybe possibly build it, and then the county can lease it from them. There's a number of different ways that it could go, but right now, we don't really have anything, a plan set forth.
Thank you. The next question, Brenda will begin with you, and the next question is, "We understand that the company providing equalization services for Alpena County has terminated their agreement. What should be the plan to replace the equalization director?" And Brenda, as I said, let's start with you. Hang on just a second. If you can't hear, and you're in the very back row, if you'll raise your hand during the time they talk, I'll ask them to get closer to the mic. So, just give me an indication if you can't hear. And Brenda, do you want the question again?
No, I think...
Okay.
I'm good. As a matter of fact, I was going to bring that point out this evening. There is a problem in the equalization department defining and keeping a director, and that was one of my top priorities, was to fix that problem. They do have a person right now in the equalization department that is quite capable of running that department, but apparently, the directors don't think quite that way. So, I think, put an ad in the paper and start all over again. But there's definitely a problem in that department.
Mary?
Thank you. Thank you. I sit on the Personnel Committee, and that has been an issue since before I became Commissioner. Our equalization director resigned in October 2014 before the last general election when I was elected. Since January 2015, I was appointed to the Personnel Committee. This issue has been discussed and reviewed more than 40 times. We have advertised the position two times and are currently doing so again, so please check online. It's online at the county website as well as other places. We have met with applicants after each of the advertisements. We raised the salary for that position the second advertisement. We met with representatives of at least two businesses and, in fact, hired one, Preston Community Services. Preston Services terminated that contract with the county in August of this year. We did offer the position to the current employee that Ms. Fornier is referring to in that office in April 2015, which was accepted. This employee then changed his mind and withdrew from the contract in May 2015. We've also considered part-time consultants. I personally have researched and called other counties and townships regarding appropriate salary ranges for the position. We have discussed and entered into temporary agreements with Ms. Malo, the Preskill, to prepare, review, and execute documents of the necessary filings with the state. We have approved temporary financial increases for the current staff as needed to complete the day-to-day matters in the department, and other commissioners have met with township officials. Thank you.
Jeffrey?
Yes, in my six years as Commissioner, nearly six years as Commissioner, we have had a lot of turnover within, at the head of the equalization department. In some cases, it's been retirement; in other cases, we've had other circumstances. It's a department that we'd really like to see firmed up. Most recently, with Preston Financial Services leaving, it's left us in a place where we're now looking to go to other counties who have the correct equalization training, as you'd say, correct equalization training to be able to provide us with equalization services as well. That's just a Band-Aid kind of fix. Really, we've, like as Mary mentioned, we've advertised for this position, and we have not come up with a suitable replacement at this time as far as the whole commissioners feel. It's a situation that I think that we need to look higher at. We may need to offer more money if we're going to advertise again, but it's the reality of it, I believe, is that we're kind of a remote county. Many people who have that kind of training within the state can get a better job as even an assistant equalization director in larger counties out states, and we're kind of at odds in that. I believe our Personnel Committee has done a good job at trying to look at that. I don't think they've just been sitting around twiddling their thumbs by any means. I think they've really tried hard to find a suitable replacement, but at this time, we are, we are kind of an alert. Thank you.
And Bradley?
We're all real easy to get along with here. We're all agreement. That was one of my points. Equalization director is a very important position for the County of Alpena. You could say it's almost one of the most important, because if they don't do the levy, we can't send out tax notices and tax bills. Thus, we don't have money, we don't run, and the doors are closed. This is a very important job. I've worked with equalization directors 15 years when I was IT Director, and I know it's a complex job. It's a difficult job. It takes a real level of expertise. I don't understand it. I just made their computers work. But I'm confident that we're going to get somebody that's qualified. I know people in the area that are qualified, and I have confidence in them. And I would just say that we're going to have to give that person, whoever we hire, we're going to have to be patient with them, because it's been kind of three, four years. What's the accountability been? And is, are all the records correct? Are all the databases right? Do they need to be repaired or fixed? So, there's a lot that's going to have to go into it, but yes, we need one.
The next question is, "What do you see as the major issue with cooperation between the county and other governmental agencies?" And Mary, we're going to begin with you.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
Yes. "What do you see as the major issue with cooperation between the county and other government agencies?"
Well, I think it, in part, depends on the agency. If you're looking at a broad perspective, I think there has to be good communication skills and people willing to collaborate and work together towards end goals that are acceptable to both entities. And so, without having a specific other governmental entity in mind, I don't really know how further to address that. But there has to be a willingness on both sides to do that, and I know the Board of Commissioners that I'm on right now, I believe we remain very open to working with other agencies. I know that we work with the city in conjunction with our IT services. We also work with...
Mary, could you turn it to the microphone?
I'm sorry. We work in conjunction with the city with our IT services is one thing. We were working with here in Humane Society on our Animal Control Officer, and off the top of my head, I think, I can't think of who else we were working with, but I know that our board has been very willing to work with others to a mutual goal. Thank you.
And Jeffrey?
Yes, I do believe that the county has worked well with other government entities. Even going back to the last question, dealing with equalization, the county does print tax bills for a number of the townships. We, like Mary had mentioned, we do provide IT services in conjunction with the city. I do believe that the communication is key, but I do believe that Alpena County has done a good job recently as far as keeping the avenues of communication open with other government entities. I would say communication is the biggest thing.
Bradley?
Once again, I don't see major issues as long as people are communicating. Mary mentioned that the county has already done that. We do the IT for the city. I was instrumental in getting that contract in 2009. It was a win-win. Anytime we can quit the duplication and join forces, city, townships, it doesn't matter. All it takes is two people that are willing to talk, willing to listen, and willing to act. And that's paramount. If we can't get along on the local level, then we're going to be in chaos like Washington is. And that's the wonderful thing about this area. Everybody here, this is an awesome area. People take Alpena for granted. Alpena's a wonderful community, and I really don't see too many problems with people communicating and getting together, but I don't see major issues either, and communication's a big thing.
Brenda?
I really don't see a problem. I know that each township and the county are all proud of themselves, and I think when one person needs the help of one township or another, everybody's there to help them. So, I don't see a problem with any communications amongst any, between the county or any township. I think everything is going good. Thank you.
The next question is, "How would you fund the road dilemma and need for changes in infrastructure?" And Jeffrey, we're going to start with you.
Was the question, I guess? I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes. "How would you fund the road dilemma and need for changes in infrastructure?"
I guess I don't know quite how to answer that. Maybe a question more for the state or even for our County Road Commission. As far as funding needs for infrastructure within the county, I suppose, as far as our county roads go, I guess I kind of misunderstand the question to some degree.
And Bradley, you're next.
Yeah, I'm kind of struggling for this. I guess I'll look at a road dilemma as like, let's say a bridge gets washed out. And as we have seen, bridges get washed out now and then in floods, and so, it takes a good year to two years to put a new bridge up. So, you have to figure out a way to do detours. Infrastructure is always expensive. We're not talking hundreds, we're talking millions. And even for a jail, I think we'd be talking a minimum of $10 million. It'd be way over that, because I think a new airport's going to be seven to 10. So, infrastructure's very expensive. You'd have to look towards the state and feds possibly for assistance and funding and engineering. I guess, given the question, that'd be about my best answer. Thank you.
Brenda?
I'll have to admit, I'm a loss on an answer for that one. I think of infrastructure, I think of M-32. That's a mess. But I don't know. I would say that would belong to the Road Commission. I really don't have an answer.
And Mary?
Thank you. I also don't know what it's exactly meant by road dilemma, but I think that question is best answered by the Road Commission, and quite frankly, the Board of Commissioners have enough to deal with trying to take down the road issue. If they're referring to what's going on in the city, then I encourage you to attend the City Council regarding the one-way becoming two-way and all that. Infrastructure in general, again, you're going to have to find the money, and you're going to have to have communication between the entities involved. I think that we continue to improve our infrastructure. I think, for instance, the U.S. 23 Business Corps of Folks have continually tried to upgrade that area and are doing very positive things out that way. I think there have been a lot of developments out that way, and while I would agree with my opponent, M-32 can be a mess at times. I do think that it has developed and it continues to develop, but it costs money, and we have to attract people to this area. So, I think it's a collaborative effort on all groups between the city, the county, and the townships. Thank you.
This is the last question, and we're going to begin with Bradley. Would you support millages for, and there are three pieces to this, road repair, libraries, schools? Would you support millages for road repair, libraries, schools?
Thank you, Jeff. Currently, I believe we have millages for libraries and schools. If we talk about schools, I remember years ago when they started the lottery that all that money was going to fund the schools, and I don't know where it went, but we're still funding the schools locally. Our kids are our future, and for somebody to say, "Oh, I'm not giving those kids any more money." We need good schools. We're blessed with good schools, good teachers here. Our kids get a good education, and I'm a product of that, and I really appreciate the education and the teachers I had. I still communicate with some of them. They're still, they were awesome, and they're still alive. Can't believe it. Roads, that'd be, yeah, that was a long time ago. But roads, I'm not sure. I think the state and the feds should be stepping up on that. Roads would really drain us. If it's a special little thing that we got to put in, like a bypass or some, okay, maybe something like that, but on a big project, I think it'd be more than what we could handle. And for the library, we've got an awesome facility here. They're not taking too much of our money, and I think we should support our libraries.
Brenda?
We are currently paying, like I said, the millage on the library and the schools. We are currently paying, like I said, the millage on the library and the schools. So that one was taken care of. The road repair, I'd leave that to the state. The more millages that we put on, the higher our taxes. We can't afford all these taxes. So I would say no on the road repair for millage. And of course, on the schools and library, I definitely agree. That's for our children. We need it. Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you. I would say yes to all. Here's my reasoning. I think if we want our area to at least even stay at the level we're at, we need something to keep our economy growing. I think that's tourism, and I think that means we need good roads. I do think it does fall more to the state on the road issue. Libraries and schools, I would never say education is not a positive thing. I think children are the future. And without a good education, particularly in this day and age, you will not be able to make a good living and provide for your family. Libraries, they help us all. It doesn't matter if you're, you know, five years old, 20 years old, 50 years old, or 80 years old. Libraries are a source for your whole community. And I am willing personally to pay a little extra to have those millages in place. I don't believe in overtaxing, but I believe in taxing appropriately for appropriate resources to keep our community and our county strong. Thank you.
Jeffrey?
Yes, I do agree with the other candidates up here. I do believe that the, a millage for roads would be very, very costly for this community. I think that's something that the legislators in our state and the federal government really need to tackle. If it was something, like my opponent said, if it was something on a smaller scale, a county road or something along those lines, I think that you may have to look at that on a case-by-case basis. As far as our libraries go, I do agree, even in the internet age, I do think that the libraries are so important. There's so much more here in the library than just books, there's programming, there's so many educational opportunities for children in this area, our local libraries. I do believe the schools, I absolutely would support more millages for schools. Just the educational opportunities that we need in this area are just so important for our children. As far as more millages, it's one of the things that I've heard constituents in District 1 say to me before, is a disappointment over some of the millages going towards administrative costs and things like that, that they would like to see some more transparency. But I do believe that on any level, a millage for schools is a good thing. Thank you.
I'm ready for your closing statements. And Brenda, we're gonna begin with you. And again, you have 90...
Sixty.
Sixty seconds. Okay. Sixty seconds for your closing statement. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to thank all of you for your questions and again, for taking time to be here tonight. For months now, I've knocked on doors, I've spoken with voters, met with individuals to learn more about their concerns. I never get tired of discussing ideas and solutions on things that need to be addressed or problems that prop up. There's a lot to be done. I'm ready to tackle those issues head-on. Tonight, I had a great opportunity to hear from you, the voter. I look forward to continuing to hear from you after I am elected. But first things first, please vote for me on November 8th, and thank you.
Mary?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and particularly Ann Naby for the time and effort it took to put together this candidate's forum here tonight. Further, I'd like to thank all of you who took the time to come here tonight and listen and ask questions. I have been working hard to earn your trust through all the work I've done on all the committees listed on my political card and website, and by always answering every constituent's questions to the best of my ability. I don't like unanswered questions. I do understand that there are some questions for which there are no answers. However, I don't have the personality to just let something go without turning over every rock, reading every document, and talking to anyone who can shed light on the subject. That's just due diligence. I believe that my training and experience as a lawyer and my personality type mean I have a lot to offer to you as representative of the Alpena County Board of Commissioners for District 5. Thank you.
Jeffrey?
Again, I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters and all those in attendance for making this possible. I've enjoyed serving the people of Alpena County now for the last six years and would like to continue to do so. I really appreciate this opportunity. And if anybody would like, I'm gonna stick around afterwards, if anybody would like to ask any more questions, that'd be free to answer. Thank you.
And Bradley?
Thank you. I'd like to thank you once again for attending, taking time, your time, out to become informed and meet the candidates, which is great. And the League of Women Voters for enabling this. We're all winners when people make informed decisions. I'd just like to say I got 38 years' experience with County of Alpena. I'm quite familiar with the functions of each office. I know the people. I still, even though I'm retired, I'm young enough that I got a lot of energy left, and I'm willing to work for you. I don't wanna use that cliche thing, I'm a people person, but I do like people, and I'm willing to serve. And what we want is somebody that's willing to serve and be unselfish. So I would appreciate your vote, and thank you for attending.
Thank you. In District 3, you have, as far as Republican, it's Camille Nurkowski. And she wrote, and so here is, I'm reading to you what she sent me. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Alpena for sponsoring this forum for the county of Alpena. Second, I want to explain why I am unable to be here tonight. I have had some health issues, but according to my doctor, I am on the mend. I look forward to continuing to serve District 3 for the county as a county commissioner. Thank you. And then the other candidate in District 3 that is running is Richard Newman, and he is a Democrat. It looks like I will not be able to attend the candidate forum, but wish to have the following statement read by the moderator. Hi, I'm Richard Newman, and I'm running for Alpena County Commissioner in the 3rd District. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for providing this important service to meet our candidates. I was born and raised in Alpena. I graduated from Alpena High School and Alpena Community College, both summa cum laude. I recently retired from the Electrical Department at Lafarge. I love our community, and I believe our brightest days are ahead. With a lot less politics and more common sense, I know we can make Alpena an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. I am running because I believe in public service and that government must do a better job of listening and producing results. The most important issue facing Alpena County is a very basic one, the loss of state funding. Decreased property taxes and now the loss of the personal property tax have resulted in ever-decreased revenue. These losses make the county budget and prioritizing budget items the most important concern facing Alpena County. I would hope to help solve this problem by joining the Finance Committee and using my background in account... We're gonna finish you because you'll be here all day. ...in accounting and knowledge learned from my own personal responsibility. To preserve fiscal stability in this area of decreased revenue, I would ask the county commissioners to innovate and have responsible budgeting while maintaining basic services like safety roads and child welfare. Also that we work closely with the Michigan Association of Counties to restore both state and federal funding. I would also work across jurisdictional and political lines to ensure residents get the most for their tax dollars. I have lived in Alpena almost all my life. The area is extremely important to me, as it has always been my home. I do have a passion to serve my neighbors. This area has a unique and unfading community spirit that makes us strong. When making policy decisions, doing what is best for the residents of Alpena will always come first. By working hard to actively listen to all residents and partnering closely with governmental units, I will ensure that Alpena County is the best possible place for all of us to live, work, and raise our families and start a business. It is my hope that through hard work and dedication, I can earn your support and your vote for the Alpena County Commissioner this November. Thank you. Will you introduce yourself, the commission, the county commission, district that you're running for, and the party you're from? And then go ahead and give your opening statement. And I'm gonna start with Robert.
Is that close enough that you can hear? Okay, I'm Robert Adrian, District 2, Democratic Commissioner.
No, we can't hear you. You need to get that microphone right next to your mouth.
Okay. I've been a commissioner for four years, and would like to continue that. This is the first time a fellow candidate here, Zach Boyle, and we'll do the, I'll look at your hand shake here. Welcome. I was born and raised in Alpena. I went to school here, Alpena High. I went on to Wayne State, got a bachelor's degree. Came back to Alpena because I liked this area, and I became a fireman. And I continued to do that after 33 years. Married my wife, who's in the crowd here. We stayed in her family home on the north side, and I raised my family. And they're either off, living on their own, or in college. And very proud of that. The last four years as a commissioner have been challenging. If we'd have said to the commissioners 10 years ago, we're gonna cut 10% to 15% on your budget, how are you gonna live? And prior to my years as a commissioner, you know, they've done very well, and we continue to do the best we can. There are challenges, and we try to meet all those challenges as they come along. And we will continue to struggle with budgets. The Propose A and the Headley Amendment have capped government recovery, whether it's city, township, county. If you're in government, you're gonna struggle because of limited resources and limited recovery that's been voted in. So those are issues, and we deal with them all the time. I also was a part-time teacher at Alpena High, three, four hours a week for almost 20 years. So that's been a wonderful thing to meet so many of our wonderful young people in the community here. And probably just about out of time.
Zach?
Can you hear me? Okay. My name's Zach Boyle.
No, we can't hear you. I'm getting some head shakes.
My name's Zach Boyle. I'm running for the 2nd District as a Libertarian. I've lived here on, off, most of my life. I was born here, and I came back about...
Where we want you to be.
Oh.
Okay, now. There. It has to be almost in the... Sorry.
Yeah, I just don't wanna be overpowering. Anyhow, I came back eight years ago after living in Traverse City and Toledo. I was home educated, and I graduated in 2012. I received an associate degree from Alpena Community College here. I've been on the planning commission for about two years. I'm also the vice chairman of the local Libertarian Party. The biggest thing for me is economic growth, transparency, and making sure government stays within its means. And I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters because I know even when I was in college, they reached out to us to try and register us to vote and just tried to reach out to the community. So I'd like to thank yous. I'd also like to thank my opponent for showing up, so.
The first question is, do you believe Alpena County Jail needs to be replaced? Why or why not? If so, why should, what should be done to accomplish this? And Zach, I'm gonna start with you. I'm trying to go back and forth between the two of you.
I'd say qualified yes. Yes, because I do think it does need definite repairs, if not a total scrapping and, you know, starting from the ground up. But the problem I would see would be, we'd have to raise bonds, you know, raise bonds, and that would be an issue for me because that would increase the debt that our government has. So I would say qualified yes. If we could raise funds in a way that would not put a debt burden on Alpena County, then I would say yes.
And Robert?
I have, my work has taken me into the jail many times over the last number of years, and we definitely need a new jail. When the conditions inside the cells are better than outside the cells and the conditions that the employees have to work in, and they work there and they don't complain about it, but I've seen the conditions. We've outgrown the jail. As Brad said earlier, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen. And, you know, do we, pay me now or pay me later if we can lawsuit against us? Just the state of corrections has changed, and this jail does not fit in with the way you're supposed to do things today. And it's a big project. Several years ago, we talked about, we had an ad hoc committee, I was chair. We looked at it, and at that time, it was about $6 million to build a jail. And there were opportunities for funding, but it just, we couldn't put it together to follow down that road. And we've looked at sharing a jail with other, you know, a regional jail. And it just wouldn't work. We did some numbers on it, and a regional jail wouldn't work. And, okay.
The next question is, we understand that the Sheriff's Department is providing an animal control officer. Would that take a deputy off the road? I'm sorry. Would that take a deputy off road patrol? Should we consider a civilian for the position? And Zach, we're gonna begin with you.
Sure. I would not be opposed to a civilian, you know, controlling that. I'd have to look at the budgetary items of that, but I wouldn't be opposed to that.
And Robert?
This issue came up to the Personnel Committee, which I am on, and we approved adding a full-time animal control officer. One of the issues with a part-time or contracting out animal control is when these large cases of animal abuse come into play, then we have to involve law enforcement, our Sheriff's Department. And we might as well take the money that we are already allocating towards an animal control officer, put it into the Sheriff's Department as a deputy, and we will allow the wisdom of the sheriff and the undersheriff in their department to take over from there. And whether it's a combination of animal control, Marine Patrol, Snowmobile Patrol, all those things, they're all out there that need to be done. And I really think that an animal control officer can roll into those duties. Plus, in the event of an emergency where we need another deputy, we do have another deputy available for us. It's more costly. It absolutely is. But I think our sheriff and undersheriff have looked at this, and through some other grant funding, we can ease the burden.
Next question is, what are the top three ideas you have to improve and protect Lake Huron and Northern Michigan? And Zach will begin with you.
I would say that encouraging development in our tourist industry is one of the biggest things I would focus on. Also trying to attract cap... Also trying to attract capital here to invest in Alpena. And as far as a third, I'm not quite sure. I would have to research it a little bit more for the third.
And Robert?
Well, I really think that's a little bit outside of the scope of the county commissioners. We do have NOAA, and we have the DNR, and the DEQ, and all those other entities that protect our waterways and our lakes. We do have the Health Department. I'm a member on the Health Department, the Fort County Health Department. And some of those things, protecting our waterways and our waters, they do come through the Health Department. So that, having a good, strong Health Department is important. It's more than just inspecting restaurants. There's a lot of scope of the Health Department, and we'll leave it at that.
The next question is, do you agree that the transfer of ARMC to Mid-Michigan was necessary for the financial stability of our hospital and our area? And Zach, I'm going to begin with you.
I would say yes. I would support, I, if I were in that position, I would support transferring it. The only thing that I would raise an issue with was not involving the people of the county in the decision-making. While the county did talk to constituents about that, I think that there could have been better communication with the people of the county.
And Brad, Robert?
Okay. Initially, I was very much against it. I have family members that worked there, that have worked their whole career there, my whole career, I've been in and out of there. I have many, many friends there. And I don't believe that it was handled in the best way. The community deserved to know more about what was going on. And I had people call me, and I was as honest as I could be with them regarding what was going on. There are people on the hospital board, or were on the hospital board, that I respected, and they have been involved in that, the whole process, through. And ARMC was not, their board and their administration was not doing anything that other hospitals in this state were already doing or already had done. So my decision was based on, we have very intelligent people, much more educated than I am, on that board. And, you know, when that board is comprised of many of our local physicians and businessmen, you have to put, trust them, and you can see. Okay.
The next question is, what do you see as the major issue with cooperation between the county and other government agencies? And Zach will begin with you.
Well, having served on the County Plan Commission, I would say one area that I think could improve would be cooperation between the townships, the county, the city, and other organizations. I think that there could be some improvement. Although, to be honest with you, I think that there was a lot of cooperation at the meetings I went to. I think that planning and trying to plan for the future would be the biggest thing, cooperating amongst the township, county, and city organizations.
And Robert?
Okay. I don't believe that there's really any animosity or any deep problems between the entities, or at least between the county and any of the other entities. Each entity has to do the job that they're supposed to do. The county has their job to do, and each of the townships and the city. And so they're not always going to have the same goal. That's just part of reality. But getting together and talking and working things out and coming to some sort of an agreement, or going your separate way, is probably going to happen. We do have the Intergovernmental Council meetings. We get together, we discuss issues, hot topics, we bring those up. And it's very productive, and it gives you a chance to rub elbows with the other governmental entities, and there's a real plus to that. I really think we've gotten along very well. Sometimes it takes a while to work through some issues, but in the end, I think the community comes out ahead. Thank you.
The next question is, do you support a ban on plastic shopping bags to protect the Great Lakes fisheries and birds? And Zach, will we begin with you?
Simply no. I don't think it's the job of the government to interfere in private affairs. Granted, I think that it's wise when private enterprise and private organizations can work towards a change, but I don't believe it's the job of the government to interfere in stuff like that.
And Robert?
What you said. I agree with Zach on that one. I think we could probably work this out without going to the Senator, the state, to have some law passed. But we are an environmental area, and anything we can do to protect what we have here is probably a good thing. But I do agree that it's probably not something that we need to ban. Let's encourage good behavior.
We're ready for your closing statements. And Zach, we're going to begin with you, and it's 60 seconds.
Uh-oh. I just, again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. I'd like to thank everybody who came tonight. And I'd also like to encourage you to go to my Facebook page, Zach Boyle. Not my personal page, but my campaign page, and just see what I'm all about. And just remember, vote for me on November 8th. And I guess I appreciate everybody coming out tonight.
And Robert?
Again, and thank you. As everybody has said, thank you. I really do appreciate that you've taken the time to come here, the League of Women Voters. And I would be very willing to continue to work for you as your District Two Commissioner. There's a lot of work to be done. I'll put my plug in here at the end. Our airport terminal is also a really deep project coming up, funded probably 85% to 90% by the federal government. So it's something that I'm on the Airport Committee, and we're working on and trying to bring better air service to you people here. So, thank you.